Yes, sir. Go back up to item number six, consider approval of claims.
What's with the person that's right there?
This is what the director asked me to do, I was relieved, so I should be able to do this. So I'm not, I don't have any support.
I'd like to motion by please.
I'll say it.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tuno, second by Commissioner Morris. Any questions? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it, it's unanimous. Uh, go back to item number five, I'd like to, uh, wish Mrs. Cakers the lovely delight of Mrs. Cakers' happy birthday. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday. Would you like to stand and speak?
Speak.
I'm glad he allowed you to carry a gun.
I got so many around me.
We don't have any amendments, we don't have any budget amendments to discuss. Did I miss one? Okay, number seven, consider approval of budget amendments for revenue certification. Guess there are some.
Oh, Lord. And when I be getting wet.
This is a replacement, sure, a version, a version.
Huh?
Three, four, and five are still in there.
That's my cheat, no problem.
Fifty, forty, and forty.
Oh, really?
I didn't do it.
Hey, but you won't, man.
I didn't do it. I promise you I didn't do it.
I hear you.
I always remember that, look real close.
Real close.
Yeah, real close. Just remember that.
I do.
Now try to tell nobody on the bus.
He's been over there so many times, he wasn't there.
Oh, man, just look at that window.
Raise your door, you can put it in, it won't get.
I was always looking, just look at that window, I could see if there's anything. Put my cheap on, it's their own.
Oh, yeah. Very open, yeah. Well, we were talking about COVID, did we, uh, that was before this 49 come out of?
No, we got two in front of us.
Hundred sixty-five dollars. That's, that's my cheat.
And transparency.
Four hundred fifty. Do you have a motion for the?
I do not.
Have a motion on the budget amendments for revenue certification.
I do now, all right? I have a motion by Commissioner Tuno, a second by Commissioner Brandon. Any, uh, any questions or concerns? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous four, Mr. Morris stepped out for a second. Vote meeting, minutes, no, anything else? I guess we can. If we covered everything else, I guess we can adjourn this meeting and go back into our budget session. Yes, sir. I have a motion by Commissioner Brandon to adjourn the Commissioners Court meeting and go back to the budget meeting. I have a second, I have a second by Commissioner McNally. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous four, oh.
Two oh two. Moving back into.
You want to say this? Yes.
Moving back into.
This is what I'm budgeting.
And make something happen. Yes, sir, yes, sir. Five, seven, one, two. Commissioner, we're, and Morris is back in the meeting and we've adjourned the record session. And now it's back in the budget here.
Oh, we have a debate, you want to get this off him? Well, that don't sound good.
Yeah, we are in the shell.
You hitting on her hard?
See it right at your house?
They've been blessed this month with some rain, in the last month, in this month. Probably did. But hopefully it gonna truckload it. That stuff's kinda hard to eat. He said he got that asphalt coming, said that trucks are kinda, that asphalt come hard to eat. You bought it. That's why I said it's kinda hard to eat. Yeah, the hopper maybe. Who's doing it, sir? Well, they love that, however you are today. So my, Miss Caroline, I would say we're gonna play off of it. What I said, we're gonna do number broke the rest of the day.
No, I'll do them all, I'll tell what you want, huh?
Okay.
We gotta cover the bases at least.
No, I'm just talking about Roden Bridge, she has some stuff that she, that we, we've got to put in here.
No, we're gonna, we'll do it today, we're gonna do it today. We need to, just, it ain't gonna, we're not gonna reduce it down to writing, we don't have an idea of what we're, what we're doing.
I know, I got for one thousand dollar reimbursement.
So, so one thing I wanna ask right now.
It's not in there.
The changes that you say you made, are we even gonna pass the motion? Put them in form?
I'll thank you.
We want the changes that we talked about. Do we need to have that in form, most of them will do the budget?
Yeah. The budget with the following changes, kind of the deal.
That's all reason I said Roden Bridge, was I gotta. Reimbursement, my award in there. It's not a little bit.
Also, just so you know, on the raises, we get reimbursed from E S D, I put the raises on those as well as the shift gap.
For the three, three an hour, is that right?
Yes. And I've been working with the Treasury Office, so I'm sorry, I have matched their material. A little bit different, but theirs is a little bit lower than the government's.
Yes, sir. Okay, so we got, we've already tended to fund thirty-eight. Fund thirty-eight changes and, uh, kinda read that into the record earlier with this. Those bottom lines are sixty-six fifty, sixteen thousand, sixteen thousand. Twenty-four thousand. And seventeen, going over what we did, I'm trying to make it like he's doing, had to make a list so we know everything. Change. I think earlier that I had, I think we also, I think there was a consensus among the court to move environmental back out of the sheriff's office and put it back where it was and with the idea that we may end up, that person may be doing like environmental slash inspection, code inspections. Okay. I don't know what's next.
So I have a prob, I don't have a problem with number eight, on adjust animal shelter, any current budget voluntary overs most increase.
What was that?
Did I miss something like that?
I just noticed.
We had fifty-three thousand in the proposed budget for animal control. That's because we anticipated to be left over from what we've already set aside.
Talking about the shift of the building or the actual?
The building of the building. We done spent it all.
I mean, I'm just trying to clarify what we're talking about, but.
I can't.
He's done B O's for everything, the lawn work, the city system.
My question is, how much is that?
There's around three hundred that's not in commerce.
Three hundred dollars?
Yeah. And he anticipates having that spent by the end of the month, so I figured out, I put it back in.
Y'all think do we need to put some money in there for utilization?
It's like, they're not even talking about that.
I know, I know what's just wrong with him.
The county historically with animal control, as you know, we've always euthanized. Now, he's trying to run it like an oak hill, that's his direction he wants to take, that doesn't mean it's, the county's never approved that, that we're an official oak hill.
Well, see, the problem that I think all of us have is that when the residents call or a dog is biting someone, or a stray dog, that's somebody dropped off, first thing you do, they cut them, they have no room. I think that's just not me, I think that's everybody. I mean, why, you have the same issue?
We can't, we can't, I don't think we can just keep dogs in distance. At some point, I don't know what the magic number days is, ten, thirty, whatever it is, but so.
How much?
From fifteen to twenty.
Okay, well, I mean, that's good, I don't care.
Well, yeah, but they, but they transfer it out of there and do other things every year. I mean. Some part of this, we can only house so many dogs, man. I don't think the National Forest got enough room to handle all the dogs.
Okay.
I'll, I'll put you in the position. I might as well just take some of it and I got, and put a line there for utilization. That's my opinion, he's only spent seven thousand dollars out of twenty.
He spent more than that, it's just that this is not a.
Okay, say he spent ten?
I think, I don't know, I can't get it on that. I know he spent more than seven.
I don't know, man, but some part of this, we gotta do something. I mean, I don't know.
Listen, we gotta try to keep this in some kind of order so we'll know how to produce a motion. So, we got, we got the proposed budget, and then we made changes the last time we met, and that's in this instrument right here, right?
Yes, sir.
Everything we sit here and gentlemanly agreed to, it's in here, right? So let's focus on what, and that can be, okay?
It's not all in there. And I ain't thought, throw nobody on the bus, Roden Bridge stuff's not in there, so I know it's not all in there.
But whose fault is that? She's put everything that you.
No, sir, no, sir, I'm not throwing nobody on the bus, it ain't, it's just, it was a mistake that was made.
I get it.
And it wasn't by me.
We can go, we can go down it one at a time, but if you wanna start with you, that's fine, but.
Well, I'd assume since this was on animal control right here, we'd start with there, and everybody sitting here, every, every one of us got a problem with it, and nobody wants to address it. I'm the only one that brings it up.
What number count are you on, we start with that?
Is it, am I right on that, y'all?
Four thirty, right? So, let's go with the animal. What is it you wanna change on animal control?
I need to add some utilization money on there somewhere.
He ain't killing them, I'm just telling you, I, I, I don't disagree with you, I'm just telling you.
I know, but he's. But we have to, uh. You know, I know he's not wanting to. But we gotta do something to ask them to, bring them in here and ask them to. So look, you got this money in your fund, that's where it's far, you need to start using some of it, instead of holding them for six, eight months.
So what, you wanna take some out of animal, animal care and put into?
Put a couple thousand dollars in there.
Utilization on, on one?
Yeah, that's what I do, I put a couple thousand dollars in it.
Could leave it like it is, and then when we get an actual bill for utilization, we can do a budget of that. So I don't think.
Okay, that's, that's fine, I don't, I don't care, I just think we gotta do something to, to kind of.
I mean, we can put a line over it, but if he ain't gonna kill one of them, I don't know where, how we're gonna ever get a bill for.
So why do we need a dog catcher then?
I don't disagree with you, I'm just.
I mean, let's just cut that whole fund out, don't even have a dog catcher, but we don't have one now.
Yeah, we got one.
They down there walking their dogs, walking their dogs around. That's what they do. They go down there and they walk their dogs around, they put them up. Y'all don't see it, I see it every day, that is my precinct, I see it every day.
We're trying to get it out of your place so it won't be so.
It's not that, I just don't understand why we have a dog catcher that doesn't catch dogs.
I don't see it much, so I don't. Tell me what you wanna do.
Let's put ten in, take it out of that line item.
Out of what line item?
Yeah.
Can you, can you put that line item for utilization?
Just put it under that?
That's a, that's a form of care. Under animal care is, uh, put the needle in them back there.
Maybe to save on the hot water, or save on washing the dog, should've saved on the flea baits. Don't believe what they.
Oh, 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 okay, I see what you're saying, we got twenty down there.
Yeah.
Okay, you want me to add a line, line for utilization, put ten in it, which will drop the animal care down to ten?
Yes.
Yes, and you might, somebody makes a big deal of it, tell it that this is just for utilization, we're not gonna let you move it.
David, will you do that, since he's in your precinct?
Which lead, the ten to ten?
Will you do that, since he's in your precinct? David, he can't move that money, it's gotta be used for that.
Once it gets put over there, we can tell him.
I'm not picking on the man, and I'm not saying that ugly, but it, it's a problem. Everybody here has it.
I don't disagree with you, but I do know that we've had, we've had the dickens trying to get somebody that wanna do it, but he's passionate about it, but he's got, that's his, that's the way he believes, I, I may not agree with it, but I do understand it, and I know you do too.
I do. These people, these people chew.
People calling you.
They chew us out.
Come get the dog, 'cause we got no more room, sometimes you gotta make room for the other.
And that's all I'm saying.
Yes.
Keep the ones that you want, get rid of the rest of them.
So euthan, euthanasia, utilization?
They don't agree.
That's your opinion?
Well, the reason I don't agree.
The public, the public hearing's over with, we're trying to pass our budget back.
Okay.
We ain't got time, we've had the public hearing, so.
I wish.
If we need some comment, we'll ask for it.
I wish we could afford to have every one up fixed, but we can't do that.
I get it.
We ain't got twenty million dollars.
Well, this all we can keep up, go ahead.
I was gonna ask on two fifty-six on the electric, we don't have anything in there for it.
For the what?
We put that into four oh nine, I believe.
Y'all put that in?
Not four oh nine, we put that into maintenance.
Okay.
Yes, we made allowance as far as maintenance. So that'd be the third thing I got, is we change in fund thirty, four thirty-seven.
Four thirty-seven.
And all we're doing is splitting animal control into two lines. And animal care, ten thousand for animal care, and ten thousand for euthan, euthanization.
Just put U.
U, E U T H A N I Z A T I O, euthanization. Okay. Now, if we could, I think all the proposed revenue adjustments have been made, they're in this, what we all have in front of us. So let's go, did you, is there anything other than the raises that we're gonna talk about in class, is there anything in my budget that y'all wanna change? County clerk's budget. Everything's good, district clerk's budget. Veteran service officer, I think we've made some changes, they're, they're in here, I think. District, two fifty-eight district, judicial district. It's not a very big one, that just covers their, their fee for sitting on the juvenile. They get three thousand from the county, they make it about ten from Pope County, and about eight from Trinity County, all of them. Four oh nine, was there any more changes in four oh nine? That contingency's going out, I anticipate to cover, a good bit of it to cover the raise.
I would say just take it all out.
What about?
Is that what you're gonna balance, if the contingency?
If it's necessary, yes.
You've got two hundred thirty-five thousand in Corona, and you've got two hundred two seventy in contingency. Right now, we're, we're gonna have to use.
That's going, that was left in there to fund the raises if we did a raise. I, I, it's fully, that's kind of what we kind of anticipated. Other than that, is there anything else in four oh nine? At three seventy-five, capital outline for sheriff's office vehicles. Was that, that's what we did?
Three hundred thousand covers the five new trucks plus the lease.
The seventy-five is loose.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Got that in.
The three hundred comes from the Corona money.
Yes, ma'am.
Corona money.
District court. District court, one of them is went. They're fifty-four thousand dollars over in court-appointed attorney's fees. Their budget was sixty. They've spent a hundred and fourteen thousand. Now, that's Judge Williams.
Hey, I'll say I'm not president, but I don't say on COVID.
I hate, I hate to speculate on it. I have my opinion, but I don't, I don't know. It's just an opinion. But I don't know. Last year, they, they stayed under. He's kind of new, so I, I, I don't know why it's so. He's got almost a term under, but. When did he go in?
He came last year, in January.
Oh, well, that's good then.
Not this year, actually.
We, we have one, one, uh, that we tried to defer cases on dock, and we routinely do well over twenty days. He works, he works hard, and he, he will stay on the bench and hear cases until they're all resolved.
I've never seen anybody in seventeen budgets go twice a hundred percent over their budget. At some point, you guys, you're supposed to pay attention to this, and at least come back and say, Judge, we run out. You just keep right on writing checks that are, that are no good.
What, there's multiple areas behind that?
I kind of understand it, but I don't, I, I'm also used to staying within a budget.
Do you see?
Let's just say.
Oh, here's. Do you see any way it's going down this time of year, or is there something better? Honestly, I'll be, I'll be totally straight with y'all. I have found that when a court-appointed attorney is, is, you know, assigned a case, is appointing to a defendant, and these are, these are not the easiest people to deal with. These people that are in our jail, and they have multiple criminal histories, multiple crimes, they're, they're stubborn. And the minute there's any kind of friction between a court-appointed attorney and the defendant, the attorneys will approach the judge and say, I don't get along with you. Okay, you might as well draw a straight here. You did a new one. You start all over. And they still do it every time. And they, and they, and they submit about, um, that.
Back in the day, around here, if you did that, and you couldn't stand that client, you, you, nobody had the gall to turn in a bill, even though they quit the case.
I, I can't speak to that, but, um.
I'm telling you, I can. I've done it here for years.
Sure, I can, I.
And, and the fees were not, but this is a different world. I can understand if it's, just say, you know, we had a capital murder, and we, we had to appoint somebody. I, I co-chaired one of those twenty-five years ago. The fees between the two of us just for that one case was like sixty grand or something like that. That was years ago. I get that. You can't, you, you don't know when there's gonna be a murder and a big deal like that. This is a whole bunch of those, apparently. Maybe it is because COVID is kind of, is kind of over, and, and, and they're really moving a bunch of cases. I don't, I don't know.
To answer, answer, answer this question, we don't anticipate that changing unless they change their practice. And there was one lawyer that was here over the years, that Todd could speak better than I can, because I never met the man, but he was repeatedly in hot water with the state bar, vowing out his standing, and he took liberty with the court-appointed system, if I'm correct. And billed and billed and billed, and, I, Todd and I are getting ready to go to trial on a case. He's forty years old. He's on the sports lawyer. Um, and that's just spring to inefficiency. And if it's inefficient, it's more expensive. Y'all know that.
Yeah, but does the guy want, is more than me?
I, I agree. I agree.
I can't help it. You don't like your lawyer, go hire a lawyer.
Exactly, that's it. And that's what I've seen for, you know, uh.
You've been doing it a long time yourself, and you know, they don't, not everywhere does that.
No, they didn't do that way in Montgomery County. I'm not saying we have to be exactly like.
No, 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 you're right.
But, but the judges down there, like, you're free to hire your own lawyer. Otherwise, there's your lawyer.
Yeah, yeah.
And he's not costing you anything, so costing us a nickel.
Well, for the last, last three or four years, it's been, it's been sixty, fifty-three. This year, it doubled, a hundred and fourteen. We ain't through yet either. And we had a sixty thousand dollar budget.
Are there any lawyers, these attorneys, who keep doing this to me, or don't call them?
Not really. Well, and the other part is that it's not our place to have prosecutors who pick, who pick attorneys already, but you wouldn't want that to happen, right?
You got what's known as a wheel, and they're supposed to randomly pick them.
It also depends on who shows up too.
Yeah, sometimes if you're the only, used to, if you were the only guy that showed up, there was five guys, you might get two five picks. But Judge Dean will pay you a hundred dollars a piece for them and tell you not to spend it all in one place. These guys are, they, they must have raised the alley rate that they can charge. It used to be something like sixty dollars, which is ridiculously low. Nobody charges sixty dollars.
I'll, I'll admit that. I don't spend a whole lot of time looking at those B values, but I believe it's probably somewhere in the neighborhood of four hundred dollars, four fifty, per plea in a felony.
And misdemeanors, for years and years, I always would put, you know, that's part of your probation, payback for lawyers, but if you want. I've been told the last year or so that, that we can't even do that now.
Well, you can. You can order it, but it's hard to enforce it, because you, you can't, you can't throw people in jail for being in debt, basically. Now, if you can prove that they have income coming from another source, like they, they, they take the ponies in Louisiana or something, and, uh, and they have an independent source of income, and they, they still refuse to pay their court costs, and they still refuse to pay their fine, then maybe, but I guess see, in twenty-five years, any defendant get revoked on probation if they're not paying.
Right, right. I get it. Funny when they get revoked, or they get thrown in jail on revocation for smoking crack or something. They always seem to me with fine-bought law money.
It's a miracle.
So, anyway, this line's overshot. I don't want, I don't want cave in and give a hundred, just double it, but perhaps I'll put about, the other court has eighty, perhaps we should go up to eighty there. If you look at the history, uh, I don't know why one court had more than the other, but I think there was some sort of agreement amongst the judges back in the day. You take more of the divorces, I'll take more of the criminal stuff. I, I think they're kind of even now, if I'm not.
To, to degrees. One, four eleven handles all, and Judge, that might be a good point to make. Four eleven handles all of the CPS files, and those usually require.
Oh, back in the day, it was one lawyer. Now that, if there's two or three baby daddies, it's like, there's different lawyers. Five lawyers on one CPS.
That might be, that might be one of the reasons why it needs to be considerably higher. Sorry.
That is, that, that, you're right. If, if that's, that's exactly where it's coming.
All right, I got zero, two, two, one, move it to eighty thousand.
All right. That increases your deficit down to twenty-three ninety-nine.
We're not through.
We're not through. You're assuming we can't find a way to fix the leak there.
Oh.
See that CPS line? They only use eleven there, and we got thirty-five. I would propose that we drop that one.
All right, round it up.
So, I got fifteen. That'll make it up right there. Anyway, that's the only thing I saw wrong of that.
All right, send next to zero.
All right. The next one I've got is criminal district attorney. There was a longevity line from Mr., Mr., uh, Fair, Fair.
They sit there, it's, it's actually on the list, too.
Yeah, we had cha, we had put the extra, the extra five in there.
She has.
Yes.
It's on the list. So, everything on the list is done.
Yeah, I was just marking these, but that's, that's on. On the list, okay. Okay, that's, that's. Oh, twelve, four, one, one. The specific line, though, is oh two, oh oh five, right? Add five thousand to that.
Oh oh three five.
Oh oh three five.
Oh oh three five.
It's already there.
Yeah, 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 okay, so. It is there. All right. I didn't realize it was already there. It wasn't in the original budget, but it is here. Okay, so that's all right then. Four eleventh judicial district, that's, that's nothing to change there. County court. I could probably cut a little bit right there unless we fix, we start doing a bunch of. Speaking of the numbers, when we were in court yesterday, we had a very low amount. We, back in, back in the day, we, well, in oh six, we did six hundred and eighty-nine cases. And we were having a trial once a month, and four court days a month. But now, I don't think we're gonna reach three hundred misdemeanors. It looked like we're at the two hundreds right now. But what, you don't have a gigantic backup of misdemeanors anywhere, do you?
No, sir. We're just trying to power through all ours. That's really all we're trying to do.
We, y'all do a bang-up job moving. I mean, we, we, we don't have no huge trial backup list or nothing like that, but I, I never have been able to figure out how we did six hundred and eighty-nine, and then we've added more law enforcement. Maybe we've got more law enforcement, and everybody's scared to break the law now, and I'm just not committing the crime. Maybe we're not, we're letting a lot of guys go for weed cases that we used to, I don't know. I just know the numbers.
There aren't any numbers or more than studies, so, I mean, we're hitting cases in bypassing too, like the guy that.
I'm talking about misdemeanors.
Oh.
It used to be, that, it used to be the, I don't do six hundred felonies a year. We did six hundred and eighty-nine.
We did, we had, uh, we had fifteen hundred felonies.
Fifteen hundred. Well, maybe more of the focus, you know, I, I get it. You're, you're popping them on the felony. Maybe they're not doing every single misdemeanor.
Well, another thing that we're doing is that, let's say you have somebody pick up aggravated assault. Okay, second-degree felony, they're looking to go into ten, ten years, twenty years, whatever. Is there a point in then coming back and filing a companion misdemeanor upon him or failure to ID or resisting arrest when shit's gonna go out of the wash when we resolve on their felony?
I agree with that. I'm telling you what, what the hit, what, what the past looks like.
Yes, sir.
I, I, I agree. Just because you got forty tickets in the book, do you really need to write them forty tickets?
Right. And you have, and filing multiple counts, eight counts, ten counts on somebody, that's, I mean, that's ten B values, and it's, uh, counterintuitive when you're dealing with all cases anyway. So, we bump a little lighter on charging decisions in terms of just loading a bunch of counts on them when we're gonna end up getting.
I'm not suggesting that's, that's where the issue is, though. Y'all make, y'all make it, I don't know what your intake is. I mean, if they were writing tickets at the same level they used to, that means you're throwing out every other thing that gets turned in, misdemeanor. I don't think that's what's happening. I don't know. I have no idea. If that, that could be what's happening. I just don't know. You're telling me that ain't what's happening?
As far as throwing out cases, that they're writing them?
Yeah.
That we're not ordering clients?
When you get them over there, you're not, oh, well, this was no good, and.
No, we're, no.
That's not.
We haven't had a huge increase in clients.
Yeah, that's all we're getting. I didn't think so, but I've, I never have to point like that. I haven't said all that. Here we are trying to find the little money.
You wanna move that? Quarter point charge for ten quarters? Cut it in half, maybe?
One, ten.
Take all of it? Oh, I said cut it in half.
Well, let's cut it in half. Make it five instead of ten. Now, if we tried six cases, we do, you have that court, court quarter case come out there. So, if we don't spend it, we still have it, but. But y'all do move a lot of, a lot of, I mean, that, that's good. No matter how you dispose of it, it's, uh, if you plead a doubt, that's better than trial nine times out of ten.
So, it's counting money?
Yes, sir. I, I have another problem with that. That bottom line will go down to twelve instead of seventeen. JPs. I usually don't find much to move on JPs unless, anybody have anything? Any of the JPs? Something happened with JP. JP two went up a little bit for some reason. Okay, salary with vehicle lines. Why is that?
We do have the JPs, and we're gonna move vehicle lines. Everybody fits one.
Yeah, but look at, look what's in here. Why does that say fifty right there?
That's their salary. Look at that.
You've already put the salaries in for the JPs, the races?
Yes, everybody.
I didn't look. I didn't even look at the salaries. Okay, okay, I see you did. So, nothing in the JPs. Elections. Okay. County auditor. County treasurer. County treasurer. I see that, I didn't realize you already put that in there. Tax collector, I didn't see anything there. Buildings, now let's, let's look at commissioner, let's look at elector. I'm pretty sure we put that, we made an allowance for the elector today. Yes, sir, we, we, that's, that's why we had covered that.
Okay, let's, let's, uh. Go to lumber supply.
Yes, sir.
You know, having said what we were talking about on the impound yard, we need to add a little bit more to that.
Catch the bill out.
In, in case.
We had an estimate, do you, do you remember what the estimate was of all the impound yard offices about the two by material? Estimation?
Oh, of the, uh, internal buildout?
Yeah.
Uh, I think it was around twenty-five, twenty-eight thousand. This was a lumber package and that was months ago, so it's probably more than that now.
That's dropping. Lumber's dropping a little bit.
It's dropping, okay.
So what we.
No, I'm fine.
Everybody wants to look at the impound.
But that was only for a single story, yes, sir.
That's all it is.
So why don't I?
We may have left one of the impound yard, she's looking.
Well, I've got two hundred sixty-seven thousand, two hundred of that is our money.
Okay.
We got money for that.
Stand one.
Okay.
Refresh my memory, Lonnie, what's the fifty thousand for capital improvements?
Oh, I tried, where am I paying for it?
That's for, uh, basically it's a follow-up of what we had this last year. It's to redo the gable ends on the annex building, some work on the courthouse exterior, and then whatever other projects start popping up throughout the year. Like new AC systems, a well, whatever, you know.
So that's one thing we do need to talk about is, is the salaries. Some of my notes, I can go back and tell you what date it was. We're supposed to move building maintenance two, three, and four to seven, thirty-seven, four forty. We're supposed to take building maintenance two, which is at forty-two nine, building maintenance three, which was at thirty-six, two nine, building maintenance four, which is at thirty-two, an even amount. It should be thirty-seven, four forty, is that correct?
Correct.
Well, all three of them, so that would make forty-three for all three of them. And if you take thirty-seven, whatever you said, add, or what, add whatever, forty-three cents will, they'll all be.
With the raises?
You're right, we need to talk about it. Certainly they had a person leave. They're kind of out. What you say that would be the carry out? I think they had a person leave and that person, that was fake. That's why I took that value to adjust that salary.
Got two of, I had two people leave, so that gave me an opportunity to make those adjustments.
Okay. That's what I definitely forgot, I didn't know to save disparity or anything.
Yes, sir.
So what was that number, what, what would that end result be there?
I'm going to have to do that with Excel or.
Really? Is it going to change?
It's not.
If you put sixty-two forty on the original salaries and we're just adjusting to three to make it down to four.
It's going to be, it's going to be. You add them up and divide it by three is what you do.
It'll be a wash.
Forty-nine, one ninety-one.
It's the most significant ones.
It's a wash. Remember that?
Two, five, thirty-one. Eighty-six, plus seven, thirty-eight, four, one, two, point thirty-five. Divide it by three equals forty-three, three seventy-eight, oh three.
So y'all want those maintenance two, three, and four to be forty-three, three seventy-eight.
That's right.
Oh, three.
Forty-four.
Oh, three. Forty-three, three seventy-eight, oh three.
Uh, three is a thousand, so I don't think it counts. Yes. Forty-three, three seventy-eight, forty, that's what I. Adds up to. Four, thirty-six.
Now, you know, you don't have to give them that at the time rates.
Yes, sir, I'm aware of that. I would move them up if I see that the skill sets match the actual pay rates.
That's line nine oh two two, nine oh two three, and nine oh two four. Out of control, I think we've already addressed that. That's, that's, that's fund number four thirty-seven. And we just basically took the twenty in the very bottom line and added another line and split that twenty down. I guess we call it twelve fifty-one maybe then. Are you with us? That amount? And you put all the raises in there, all the constables?
Yes.
Sheriff. I think we went over that, we spent a lot of time on those, on that part earlier. Detention center. And that includes the raise for the rest of their employees and, well, five vehicles.
Five and seven.
And then we're also going to get down to doing something else to help this.
All the products.
So, well, the, uh. Last plan for the new facility, we're going to do something to, to further that, that plan, so to speak, without.
Advancement.
Yeah, without saying, some things you can't talk about until the deal's done. And where is that going to come? Where we going to put that at? Is that out of four oh nine?
What are you, what are you thinking?
I don't think we come out of executive end and vote it to.
Three hundred thousand.
Follows itself.
Should that go in four oh nine? So we've got to go back to four oh nine. That's. I don't know if we have a line for.
I'm going to have to add a line for capital outlay.
Capital, capital outlay. Capital outlay, uh, property acquisition.
What amount is that?
Three hundred thousand.
Okay.
Uh, now we've got to go back to the first section, revenue section. For the line for doing that. Let me guess, it's either, it's either got to come out of recovery money or the fund balance. Y'all could say, I just can't imagine the words to come out of my mouth.
I thought you said that's over far.
Uh, you're right, you're right.
I know, sir.
You said two hundred thousand, which we had set aside for the impound yard. We had to come up with.
You're right.
We're going to need a little bit to figure this out, build out though, ain't we? What'd you say, total amount was that build out was two fifty-seven?
Two fifty-nine.
Two hundred sixty-seven thousand.
Yeah, we can take two hundred thousand of it and take a hundred thousand out of that, the build out. Leave the sixty-seven in there. That'll cover everything that's on the menu. Sound like a plan to me?
You can, slow down for me. I have a good confusion.
Yeah. I'm talking about taking two hundred out of the impound, we've got two hundred and fifty-nine thousand.
Oh, okay.
Take two hundred out of that, leave the fifty-nine for the lumber package.
That's, that's the build out.
But the build out, so take two hundred and then I'll have to get a hundred out of.
That's it.
So this.
Good time on building.
He said the build out.
Two by material was twenty-five thousand dollars. Not insulation, not wire, not cheap rock. A hundred, probably either a hundred and twenty dollars a square foot. It ain't going to cost that much.
I'm going to get seven.
I'm going to get a square foot. So we're going to do that.
Yeah. About.
Put a hundred thousand in there.
Twenty, twenty-four hundred.
Put a hundred thousand in it.
Twenty-four hundred square foot?
Put a hundred thousand in it, man.
I don't know, I'm just guessing.
Yeah, you gotta do the outside. Don't need to haul those on outside.
I just said fifty, fifty thousand, six thousand.
Hundred?
I guess we'll take that bit of one more.
Yeah, what, what? So how much are we going to have to take out? Fund to do the acquisition.
I said leave that.
I said, I would leave, I'm going to take the three hundred out of fund balance. But I'm using the space under it.
Okay. I thought that was sure making this a conflict.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I don't.
Yes.
Okay, so it's, you got, you got some things here. Unbalanced designated for current year. You could pick one of those two lines because that, but I don't know.
I'm going to add that three hundred thousand to that two hundred fifty-nine thousand. Or else.
What? So that, what is that, two fifty-nine for?
Two hundred thousand of it is for the sheriff's office impound and then the rest of it is, it's our money that I'm keeping track of.
Eighteen six ninety-eight for, uh, that's our salaries.
Okay, okay. Yeah, we're making another line for this, this, this here, can you?
I will look at that, I'm not sure, you try to make some fund balances, I like this, I don't know if you have to. Sure, we have to fund balance.
Well, you've got two in there already. One says tax note, one says CU dot dot dot, I don't want the rest of that.
Current, current.
Current. Okay, you click where you, where you feel like it needs to go and where your account, accounting is correct. Property.
Done.
Ag.
Covering acquisition.
Sorry.
Is he getting cover in that?
So, that takes us to detention center, I believe. We didn't have it over it pretty well too. Public safety. Is there something else that we want to do?
Yes, yes, I have, I have my phone, they sent it to me. They're needing two radars. They're forty-eight hundred and fifty dollars for two radars.
Capital outlay, does he have a capital outlay on? So these names, are they assigned permanently to these numbers? Because that TV satellite, if he stays there, that, that line will cease to exist eventually.
Yes.
I don't see a capital outlay.
I would have to add.
Because there's something else that could go under.
How much from it?
Five thousand.
Oh, that needs to be up there.
Well, they're twenty-four a piece, twenty-five a piece.
It's twenty-four, it's forty-eight.
Five thousand.
Okay, so this is fund number four forty-five, UPS. Two radars. Five thousand dollars. Next time y'all get out there stretching it out on twenty twenty-five, he lights you up.
Forty-eight.
Thank you.
Every, Miss Caroline, forty-eight.
So instead of five thousand, forty-eight fifty?
Yes, forty-eight fifty.
Forty-eight fifty. Forty-eight fifty-two radars. Oh my god. Do y'all see that?
Uh-uh, where?
Now, the next thing in the books, pathologists, autopsies. A hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, we spent that. We spent a bunch this year already.
Well, we spent seventy-one thousand. And the year ain't over.
Yeah.
My goodness, that's a lot of money for autopsies.
You want to take some out?
Eighty-two thousand in nineteen, sixty thousand in twenty, fifty-two thousand in twenty-one. I don't know, right now it's looking like they're going to end up around seventy-five. I don't, we could probably take a little out, you know, who knows? You've got no control over, I mean, the JPs, they kind of are the ones who decide whether to autopsy. You never know how many questions more answer.
I would leave it alone.
Man has spoken, let's move on. Parks and wild, it doesn't look like nothing. Remember, we put a little money in there for, they must not have bought it yet.
Uh, she told me that she worked the trash, a dump, for me, somebody got some trash and she said she was driving camera, so. I'm pretty sure she's got that camera.
She's gay.
I bought my own camera.
No, it's a game ward.
Uh-uh, I bought it off the road bridge.
You got the game wards, if they ain't got enough dose layers out there, they, they, they.
I called her, she was working.
Trash thieves.
At the end of the road, listed for bird, bird hunter. I was pulling inside, I told my father, we were right there, took care of it. Got the beauty.
Really?
Yep. They had the names in the trash.
Huh?
Their names in the trash.
Trash is from yours, the mother who dumps it. You're responsible for it, you beat. How about Mr. Dillon, if he's still here?
Anyway, I don't see. They, they hadn't used any, but leave, I, I'd say, I don't know.
He has some stuff, man.
Well, I guess we'll leave it in there, huh? IT department. I don't think we've had any issues there.
Sure.
He's got a little money, he has been.
I think he has been at that, near.
Oh, schooling, sometimes they wait for the last.
I don't know about school, but I know he's buying some things.
They can buy computers up there, software.
I turned mine on, it takes three minutes to do the. Of course, that's. I mean, that's.
Which time?
Sir?
Which time?
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, that first one I got really, they had one way down. As far as I know, that one's all right. Extension service. We went through all these before, but I can't think of any separate new. Emergency management, is there something else that you need, cause you probably could find something to do?
Uh, yeah, there's government money, uh.
All right.
I'm working on, I'm working on fixing the negative. I'm working on fixing my budget on this, I have a budget in the next, next commission report to fix a couple of the negatives that are in there.
That ain't got nothing to do with this, this is, this is next year's budget.
On next year's budget, uh. I, I think it should be good if we keep on going wherever I want to.
Well, the department is, since you just now started, we had about six months worth of months getting spent out of there, so I'm. I wouldn't want to cut much out of there, cause next year, you're in pretty good health, and I expect you to be, uh. Going a little more on things. There isn't, there's no increase of, of salary, it's like some very airways. But I'm suggesting as your supervisor. You probably got something you could be doing right now, so I'm telling you. That's why I sent you that text, not an hour ago. Senior citizens.
Sir?
Senior citizens.
That was okay.
There comes a run. Ah, everybody catch your breath, laugh, and then we move from that. We're good on senior citizens, I believe. Nine one one, we had talked about during some of the budget hearings, about combining the, you had a bunch of part time and you were. Come on up to the front.
I think she wanted to add a person and take out the part time.
That's what I thought.
That's the way I think.
I.
That's true or not?
I, that came about probably right after I filed the proposed budget back in. August tenth, so.
Yes, sir.
Where are we at on that?
So, my suggestion was, I wanted to take the two part time positions and make it a full time. Uh, you know, that was my wish list for the year, if that, because I paid Mark Wood out of my part time budget. And then our office help. So, it's the only full time people there is this man Dennis.
So when he does something like, he's helping, I don't know, probably a lot of what he does, he may not even turn in a bill.
He does.
He helps with the, on these various building projects, uh, I don't know where those are getting turned in through you, it's all going through them. And it, it may.
I mean, I, you know, I can't talk about what hours he turns in, because he's really hasn't gotten that much. I ran a detail with Gordon, what he shot for right of the year, and for all the new projects going on, he hasn't gotten that much, got about twenty, thirty thousand. That was previously in that budget. Uh, but, you know.
That's one.
But I thought, at one point, we had talked about possibly maybe, you know, to his own line, I don't.
But he did.
To his own line, I don't know.
Well, I kind of like to grow ours.
I think we talked about Mark's, I'm trying to find out, because he was, he does work for, like, precinct for over two, three years long. What city God, he comes out of work part time.
Does that come out of your part time budget?
It's supposed, it's supposed to, I don't know if it's happening.
I don't believe so, but I see that in detail now, what hours it stands on my project versus Innovation Center.
I was hoping you'd start doing some of these covers.
Yeah.
Spend this time.
Yeah, that would be, that would be great for me. Yeah, especially since we got, you know, bigger county projects going on. Sheriff's Department, Innovation.
Some of those funds that might have a budget to build on the building or whatever, maybe money in those things, sir, could ever pay for it, I don't know.
I don't think. Tell her that's not important. Come to talk about the project.
But, I mean, he submits his time sheet to remain, and then I forward it on to the treasurer's office, because I still have to sign off on his time sheet.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, he sends you a time sheet, he needs to give sheet, and he's an engineer, so he knows how to do this time. Uh, because the headline, I have fifteen minutes here, thirty minutes here, hour here, ten minutes there. And he just needs to get a script.
Yeah.
Worked on impound center, two hours.
Okay.
Innovation center, one hour.
So, whenever he submits that time to.
He admits contract and it goes to her, not us. Paid out of payables, not our time.
Goes to me, and then you sign off on it, check, make sure.
So, you're paying these contract services or?
Our part time.
Employees actually have their employee, part time. He just needs to detail where his time is due.
And then take it out of contract and serve it.
Well, it's at the precinct, we need to let us know.
Pretty much come out of yourself, your part time line. Cause you don't work for David, it comes out of his part time line.
Perhaps we'll, maybe we'll just add a little of this part time cover there.
There's gonna be a, there's gonna be a, uh. Tracture.
Yes.
Because he works with, on private jobs, one day, then somebody.
There's somebody lost, they were, that, that would be a lot of, and they would try to put his time for that, office to this office and this office, and this to this one.
But he still needs to turn his time into high times like that.
Yeah, all he needs to do is turn him, sell his prescriptions, and a little time down, risk one, two, three quarters. Build, build, pretty much.
So, are we gonna get a full time position, or are we gonna get more part time? I think that's the question. So you think the environmental, having an environmental, will take care of some of the problems?
When?
Having an environmental officer is gonna do.
The time portion?
Time portion type of.
It's gonna be working parallel with the.
I get that. Well, that'll lead to some of the problems.
She hit the shoot.
And so we're looking what, six, eight times down the road?
Yeah.
So what are we gonna do with the part time?
So on. She also left the part time money at half full time.
That's, that's what I was just saying, what are we doing with it?
Yeah, just.
What are we gonna do, or are we gonna get more part time?
I'd say get her more part time right now until we kind of see. Before we're active.
What if we move it up to thirty?
Would that have the part time paid?
Well, some of that's paying Mark Woods out of that.
Yeah, Mark Wood of that, but then, I don't know if y'all are planning on doing that dollar and a half for part time. Because that's gonna, this is gonna dwindle fast, you know? So, but I, I can manage to manage it.
Okay.
Well, that's a twenty five percent increase to that line, if you move it to thirty. Forget about the dollar and a half, that, that, it'll come out of there. Yeah, still take care of it. Okay, so that's line, part time and fund, Department four eighty six. Thirty thousand. Yes, zero, 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 eight. Thank you so much. Our marshal, I didn't see any change there, did he? Environmental, it's still in there, so we just leave, yeah, it's in there, of course, good. That position hadn't been filled in six or eight months, and we're putting a big raise in there on that position, but nobody has. Been suggested to me that we leave, make the raise off of that position, it's not filled anyway. We ought to think about that.
What did you say to us?
That position's not filled anyway, why not leave it for a quarter? Drive me out? That'll save six thousand dollars.
Wait, what did you say?
Taking the raise out of that position.
Oh, type of rate.
So every, it's the same position.
They'll go back to forty one eighty three?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, so, that's four eight eight. Oh, oh, one.
That'll cover the month, maybe the year.
That's right. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. End of your tail? Yeah, that's a choker, isn't it?
Said he fell down.
Forty six. What was we thinking when we did that?
What was that?
Fifty.
It took fifty?
Carson Kankman, that's what she said, fifty.
Yeah, I was looking to, I get that.
Tell it, that's where it is.
Well, we're gonna go up to at least two hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause we're not, she's not gonna reach that. Right, we got two yas on that one, let's cut it down. Total, bottom line, three ninety, two ninety three. Two oh nine twenty six.
What do you want it to go to?
Taking it out of the. Two hundred.
Uh, line two hundred.
What do you want it to go to?
Two hundred is that line, the bottom line, two ninety three, two oh nine twenty six.
Exactly, we're taking up two hundred.
Oh, two hundred. Two fifty. And two hundred fifty. Professional fees and claims, I'd say we just gotta leave that alone, it's been a little more of, my goodness. Software maintenance, is that where your software, most everybody's software comes out of? Some of your software that I share, they're terrible. They're terrible, that you call and try to get some help, hey, I got a new employee, she's trying to coordinate. Very smart on the computer, but she's not having much luck getting that.
Obviously it's horrible.
Y'all get, y'all have the same experience, problem, right? Next time we go to one of these schools, I'm not sure if anybody else out there, but. I mean, it's, talking about lots of money here, and you can get them to talk to you sometimes.
Maybe you visit somewhere later, for the.
I've had zero profit since I came here.
Who can change her?
Zero, man, if something, if something happens, I'm gonna just pick up the phone, maybe come down here next week. When I first started, that's a problem.
And these numbers ain't total, this is just, we've got grip and a big group here, a lot of the other part time software deals there. Should I really think about that? Well, there's your department, so just tell me they're having trouble.
Yeah, we can't take payments.
Can't take payments, cause.
Absolutely. I mind you just sign?
Well, I mean, they're taking the money in hand receipts, I guess.
Yeah, and then we have to.
But what are you, uh, yeah. What are they telling you?
Give the mark, and then Mark, there's this little test, and then they say, we don't have, and Mark says, I don't know, so we give a big.
Mark don't write the software, and he's not the one getting.
Exactly.
Hundred and ten thousand dollars of software. Well, we spent a hundred and sixty nine thousand, even though our budget was a hundred and ten.
That's because there was two payments in one year, it should have been.
Okay. Well, last year it didn't get paid timely, okay, well, I. Yeah, wow, it's supposed to be in the eighties. If it was a mark issue, it'd be something like, you know, something wrong with the, the computer or something.
And we tried multiple situations, we even gone to your office and signed in and tried to do a payment there. So, they're saying it was my office specifically, but then they checked our users, and it's not that.
There's no way that all the computers went out all at the same time, and you're using everything else that you do.
Exactly. Got five different users in my office, and none of us can take a payment.
Somebody, when did this started, did you?
Didn't.
Somebody flipped the switch or disabled something, or did something.
Yeah.
On either our end or their end.
Sure you wasn't on mine.
Yeah, something, that's.
We talked to them once or twice a week, just to, she stayed on top of it, because it's not just the firm.
Use your national.
We need, we need to look into that.
Are you using your national forest fund balance?
Okay, are you, are you? On page fifty one, your.
What?
Page fifty one, your transfers out, all that's kind of up to date?
That's gonna change a little bit, because given the wages, there's gonna be some funds that are gonna need some help. For example, sanitation is only small, so that, penicillin, so that transfers out are gonna change based on.
All right, Leo's fund?
That's most of the confidence.
We don't do much with that, that's for sure. It's a whole lot for education, the sheriff got six thousand in education, and it had been a nickel spent out of that. Does it only cover certain kind of schools, these Leo funds you have up here?
No, it covers about any household.
For whatever reason, you hadn't used a nickel of it this year, I know y'all been to some...
There's some coming out next week, dude.
Okay. All right. Like I say, it's kind of a standalone fund, JP Technology Fund. My goodness. They got forty-three thousand in fund balance, revenue projected, it's the same as last time.
I can check that fund balance, because I don't think they actually have forty-three thousand. And if they don't, then it's gonna have something coming in from the general fund to help.
They got nineteen thousand in projected, it's just like last year, no change. JP, they spend. That's JP, but we really, they, they use, they're doing the same thing as last year in these JP funds. Those are designated funds. Title III, I'm catching up with you, Commissioner Lawrence, Title III, National Forest.
So, page sixty, those figures, it's activity today, I know they're at your, you know... Precinct Four's got thirty-one thousand in there?
That's just the revenue that has come in.
From this year?
Yes.
So, what I would suggest is you, is we carry forward all four of those figures to the next year.
Uh, the spreadsheet, it's up to the other fund balance.
I would say these are gonna be, this is, it wouldn't be all over fund balance, but it needs to be fully collected this year.
This is both of your funds, that thirty-one thousand doesn't mean you're cut out.
You also put it over in the, I'm gonna spend it line, if you want to spend it, plus the fourteen thousand.
You put line in the spend it line.
If you don't...
We can't, we can't get it if we don't.
That's right, that's right, ain't nothing wrong with putting it out there, that's what it's there for.
So...
But mine, I make it return.
Well, the budget says fourteen thousand, I hope they estimated the revenue was gonna be, well, it was actually thirty-one thousand, so that's what's been rolling to your fund balance.
And I'm, and I'm saying, take the thirty-one thousand that I collected this year, plus the fourteen thousand, put it in my main, like, like, like.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Fourteen thousand is what they proposed for this current year.
Correct, which is in there already.
And where'd it come from? Out of your fund balance?
It's proposed for the current year.
Proposed revenue?
Yes.
So you wanna add what you collected to that?
I wanna add this year's collection to that.
So forty, forty-five thousand.
And I think all of us wanna do that, I'm just thinking.
All right, so forty-five thousand for three and four, oh fifty-seven, thirty-eight thousand.
Do you follow?
So, right now, like I said, you budgeted fourteen thousand, you wanna add that thirty-one oh five seven?
Yes.
So you're gonna, all right, front fund balance, one's got a different, it's forty-nine, six eighty-three.
What I'm gonna do is, I can put it right here.
Yeah.
I'm gonna put it right here. Well, we'll deal with that.
Then I get the same three and four.
Yeah, we're treated like stepchildren.
You actually get more for some reason, you have twenty thousand.
Yeah, we're treated like stepchildren. Maybe we should sit down together, by the way, the big leader, each other.
The number at the end is just what we projected, though. You think that's the projected income, that, that number on the end of the line?
I say, yeah, okay.
No, 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 stay.
So, in, in, in the Title III, you got forty-nine, six eighty-three, thirty-eight, four fifty-six, forty-five, oh fifty-seven, and forty-five, oh fifty-seven, right? There. Forests, schools, E S D, I guess we'll leave that alone too.
Yes, sir.
Collected more than, than we're proposing. Okay, y'all wanna leave it alone, leave it alone. Road materials. Page sixty-two, what we just did, change any of that?
Page sixty-two?
Yes.
That, all the funds are changing.
Yes.
I thought so. Now, take the bottom line, interest in textbooks. Recing, three constable revenues. And a light seizure or something. Let's get on over. Road and Bridge Precinct One. That's what we should start with, yeah? Road and Bridge Precinct One. Your revenue lines. That's on page sixty-eight.
All one is balanced.
Okay. In other words, black it, all right? Let's go to page sixty-seventy-two, uh, Road and Bridge Precinct Two revenues.
I had him write it, add a secretary, add thirty-one thousand. And there's a four-hundred thousand dollar that come in, a re-advisance.
Good, and you've been the forehead secretary.
Yes, that's, that's what I was saying, I left five, I was going.
Okay.
That we, we've talked about several times, and it was just, we didn't get it on here.
So are you gonna take the part time? You're gonna leave the part time there?
Yep.
And add a home road secretary?
Yes, sir. I got one fixing to be on.
Same as the other, for forty-five thousand?
No, sir. I just said thirty-one thousand, is that what I said?
Even?
Yeah.
So you're gonna leave the part time there?
Yes.
And add another employee's secretary?
I, I have one fixing to be off of all time.
So, is that number three, is it a little tall maybe?
Yeah, I have to create another line. And then we'll increase the benefit to twelve.
Right.
I don't know if y'all realize it, and I ain't told them about, Precinct Two does all the roadside to the county. And it's a lot of work, buddy, to do the roadside. I bet Mark's got two hundred of them this year.
The student does, and you put them up.
Oh, God, he does. You take a pair of tweezers, and you sit there and you pick up things out.
So you're gonna take that to fund balance?
Yeah.
Yes.
To... Balance.
Yes.
You following in what he's doing there?
Yes.
And then the rest of the money goes to my main secretary.
Four, thirty-four, that's the one oh five, I've already got it in there, the rest of the other...
Yours, sweetheart.
Three, three nine, and then twelve two.
See, we talked about that several times already.
Is someone's covered too?
Yeah, I don't know, man, it's too much.
He got, he was reimbursed for four and thirty-four thousand, we go to a hundred and five, I'm just gonna cap it out, and so the rest of the three, three nine, we'll increase the reward in years.
And, and, and cover that employee, sure.
Yeah, all justice funds out.
Got you.
I'm gonna say that in a minute.
What do you want, the employee completely out of the business, which is to be...
Ma'am?
You want that employee out of all Precinct Two, which makes it easier.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Please don't ask it again.
You'll take something out of the other one. Sound like you want more of a talk.
So Precinct Three is okay, you said?
Precinct Three.
Precinct Three said he's balanced.
No, it's not.
It's balanced, we just want to pay you.
Oh, yeah, I gotta check.
What are you changing now, though?
Precinct Four, I'm gonna take, add my fund balance, she's got one sixty-eight, nine, forty, and thirty-two and a half.
What is your, what is your fund balance, how much you got in there?
I'm projecting my follow-up now.
That's what you got now?
Basically, after, after this year, I'm gonna take, add the four, thirty-two, nine, forty-four, thirty-two, out of fund balance. Four hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine forty-four, thirty-two.
Four hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine forty-two?
Nine forty-four, thirty-two.
I think seventy-eight thousand.
So let me check on the...
That's the revenues, now where you gonna put it?
All right, I'm gonna move contract to services, from forty-five to seventy-five thousand.
Yes.
I'm also gonna move gasoline and oil from forty-six to seventy. I'm already sixty-four, I got another, another fifth, I need, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
And then I wanna take a hundred and fifty of it, and put it to another line, I, for my ten percent match, on compared to Harvey Gray.
You think you're gonna be the one, huh, tell me?
If I don't have it in there, I can't, I can't do it.
Match, grant match.
A hundred and fifty.
I hope we already have a line, but we make a line. Line.
Then sixty-four, no, cut that, why are you giving?
Sixty-four thousand?
Sixty. So, okay. That one extension off, there was a question asked a while ago, I guess I'll be the bad guy, the room to ask it.
What page is that?
We give her salary plus fifty-five hundred dollars travel, right?
Where, where is she, oh, that's on page forty-two.
Then another five thousand for travel.
All right, then we gave six thousand, and what now?
And those guys that asked me, why don't we, why don't she get the whole raise when she's considered part-time? Because after her salary comes something, the cabinet math comes in, it's incidentally. I might as well be the bad guy, because I love to ask her.
You mean she gets that much more from the state, is that what you're telling me?
How much more?
I don't know.
Most of the, she, right now, her, when that secretary, that ain't gonna be part-time. She makes less than the, she must get something after she makes less than the secretary does.
She gets that mistake, that they have her salary, they pay half of you.
My, my thinking is, she's full-time, and she doesn't...
I miss, I miss asking, that's what they ask, that's what they ask, can I be the bad guy, ask her?
I don't know, I'd be very reluctant, I consider it full-time, I wouldn't want...
It don't cost nothing to ask.
Yes, sir. That's my thinking.
Okay.
All right. All these other funds are... You know you got various adjustments to make?
Yes, so we have adjustments to make, because of...
Break time?
Break time, it's time for a motion.
I've made motion with adjournment.
Wait, wait, on the...
No, we need to get finished, we can't, we're supposed to have this done within seven days.
Okay, so part-time, we're gonna do them at a dollar fifty?
Yes.
Okay, well, we gotta figure, this thing's not balanced yet, so...
Is that all we're gonna change? Did y'all have something else?
I gotta get them all around. Let me see, get them all around, man. Sorry.
I'd like to change.
Was it just I?
Huh? Constable? That is, well, the constable, I thought she didn't give her...
I didn't put it in there.
Sir, can you have that Jeep towed out of the way?
He got that Jeep up under the deal?
No, he's six towed.
That's a good story. I'll be glad he didn't roll with the door, I'll drive it home.
Okay, just let it be, bro.
Well, you want me to say, all the records, we're, we're taking about a ten-minute break. Take all the rest, great. I'm just gonna see if there's anything on it. I'm just gonna see if there's anything to watch. Hey, the ACF, the kitchen back there is crowded.
Even on salary.
Who's that one?
The, uh.
Why you still? It's the hall that I can't, I can't check out.
You only made.
Just saying. Get somebody around. It's a smile.
We just said the whip, ten, three, we were there, we were shopping.
Well, part-time is one fifty, so even if, are we talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, there's a one fifty, you're still part-time. It's got a salary, but they're still considered part-time, so I would go with the one fifty on it, not the thirty dollars.
Yeah, definitely, I mean, it can difference something because fifty, but I'm saying, we just said ten, uh, hundred, you didn't, it's not an hour and a half. Kinda sound a little bit, kinda a little bit. Right, and then what we did, we just get, like, look at that, ten thousand dollars a year, sometimes, five hundred eleven months, that's all we did. It's not nine.
No, it's not, he's got his contract here. You don't see what I've seen, or these other commissioners see, you don't see these hundreds of dogs that are running around, nobody ever a dog. And they say I'm doing a good job, I have no complaints to say, you know, but they tell people that they can't fix their dogs. Well, some of these dogs they hold, and they're ate up with man. Well, some of them dogs you can't fix. Some of them pit bulls that bite you in the head, you can't fix them.
Well, as I agree with you, I mean, it ain't that hard to draw.
That's all I'm saying.
Because I've seen them, and taken two to that, and, and, and tried to fix them, and which is hard.
And, and I commend them for that, 'cause I've, I've done one too, but it's to a point where we have to get, we have to get to where you're dealing with, that's only bad, say, what they'll be. And when we bad, before we can't take them all, so you have to talk in here the problem ones.
Well, we do, well, now we can.
I, 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 we still have to.
But you have any animals that this will drop on?
Oh, Mr. Dieter, I can, if you can drop, just, just say let it run one. And if you don't see six stray dogs, you won't see none. It's that bad. It's that bad.
Well, we.
It's just not, but it's just not at my precinct. Mark has the same issue.
I don't have a problem with my area of the stray dogs.
What do you do to them?
Nope. Coyotes will get them. I got a pack of coyotes down in the roof.
If I drop a bunch of coyotes off, it's like run them up, I have the fattest coyote in the world.
You got coyotes, and I got foxes.
Larry, do you get dog calls? Do you get dog calls?
No, man, we don't let them go. They just coyotes sit down on horses, huh?
Yeah.
Oh, Lord, it's getting good.
Yep.
Getting close to four, getting close, I hope. I guess they're both back. Alright, it's ten till four, and we, they had a little break to get a glass of water and stretch their legs and.
That guy.
Regular session. What else do we like?
Only other thing I'd like to do, is start a few charges for the constables and commissioners and the judge. And I'd like to see that, uh, we got a refund and, and insurance.
Sixty-seven thousand dollars.
Sixty-seven thousand dollars, and I'd like to see us get a six thousand dollar increase in a few. And that's for the constable and the commissioners and the judge. That's what I'd like to see.
What about the auditor?
Auditor?
I'm just saying.
I could make ten.
They, 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 they did some travel with it, thank you.
Auditor. I'm just saying that to that.
I could, I could, let, let come up.
Larry, we, we stayed here, you said, I, I.
Say it one more time.
I'd like to see, uh, the commissioners, the judge, auditor, and the constable get a, a lounge, a gas raise of six thousand dollars.
Um, okay, the judge, commissioner, constable, auditor, what about JP's? They get one as well? And six and eighty? I think that would be, no, but JP's get five thousand. That's what you, I've said this year after year, I dropped all over this county, driving back and forth to the bank, I constantly on the road to the county, only one, let, let, one that lets me get one, and I've dropped my whole, I've dropped the precincts, I've dropped the sheriff's office, I've dropped the sheriff's office, I've dropped the bank, one department.
You're traditionally speaking, but the banks are right across street, you're, I don't know, I'm just saying why, I ain't saying.
So, so if you're trying to make nothing against Caroline or anything, why should we? I went even to businesses that paid off guilt, too.
It's been that way for four years. They go out to precincts and audit, and.
They do.
Not sure that the treasurer does that.
I don't go over there and audit, but I do go to precincts' offices and do business.
So if we do this, that means we're not gonna charge no more mileage going to these meetings? I'm just asking.
I was charged mileage, I never have. I think I only got it one time. I never have, I don't think we need to, I mean, I just, I never have.
I've never either, I'm just curious.
I've never charged for going to school. And I've never.
I was gonna say, I've never been.
But I would, I would put that, uh, tag it on the end of.
I'm as curious as I ask.
So is, is it, is it anybody else that we're talking about?
Yeah, we don't.
If we're gonna do that, we're gonna have to lower it down if we're gonna stay within that sixty thousand. I think the constables wasn't asking, I thought they were only asking for four anymore.
Ms. Dieter, don't y'all charge mileage when y'all go somewhere?
I do when I go to school, but I don't get a vehicle.
Ms. Caroline, will you go somewhere? Would you charge mileage?
This is out of my county, like, when I had to go to Austin, and when I got out of San Antonio, I sort of got it.
I see. All we just do it like that, just the constables and commissioners.
Yeah, and while back we raised the constables, and we didn't raise nobody else's. I'll just say.
There are fourteen, five, there are thirteen, five. Fourteen, two.
Everyone, watch the last one, you want to.
But I understand, I mean, it's killing everybody, this is not them, it's killing everybody.
Carol, how much, how many shares without me, do you before, how much shares?
Eight thousand.
You eight?
I am.
Eight thousand.
Look, look, we'll see that, the district judges said you. Is that correct?
I think, I think when we raised ours to twelve, we left that one alone, maybe the district judges didn't ask to raise it.
No, let me tell you what happened. The auditor at the time said I'll forego the raise from eight to twelve.
True.
Because I want my girls to have my, my employees to have the raise, so, and she also forego the insurance. So she didn't have insurance at the time, she gave that up, she gave the bill for that, so they got a raise, but then now. We got insurance coming out, you know, so, that's not, that's not.
That's not happening.
That sounds right there, she was a diplomat, and she did what she chose to do, nobody twisted her arm to do that.
So what about the tape pieces, are we gonna say no on that? We got a job up here, and we're in jail.
No, they got Skype.
What do they do now?
They got Skype they use.
What? Sir?
I'm not asking, I'm gonna.
I, I say no, because they got Skype they use up here.
I would be in line to say.
Hello? Hello? Yes. Yes, or it's for, I don't know, something. Okay, um, let me text mine, she's the most.
I send them a question for the charge.
Yes, you have, oh, that's where it's at.
What is the rate?
The call's at one minute, walking, alright, let me, let me call mine. Okay, alright, excellent.
What is the rate now?
So, so what would be, what?
If you put the JP's in there, we get four, that would be within, that's fifty-six thousand. No.
Fourteen, four.
Was that the line?
So for you and the, and the tax assessor, what, I mean.
Alright, bye.
What wouldn't be a slap to the face?
Anything wouldn't be a slap in the face.
Well, a tax assessor carry a gun every day, every day, every week. If you really think about it. Right?
Well, it's never had one.
I, I did it, I did it.
Well, I dropped all of the county, all, that's all I got to say, I go out to the precincts.
That's all you got to say, thank you so much.
What did the constable ask for?
Asked, I thought they asked.
I thought someone.
They told me for, what I remember, I asked before we decided to do a raise.
They were asking for around four to increase their.
Four, so they wanna go eighteen, two?
Yes. That was precinct two, let me check that, I think they were.
I think I was probably saying.
Eighteen, two.
Eighteen, one.
That's the.
Now they do that to, they say to those partners, despite this key, I don't know.
It's rolling, there's a lot of dollars, it's about seven, eight.
So we wanna give the tape pieces, is this two hundred? How many two hundred? They already did five.
They get five, I think.
You know, they do it on staff, I think, yes, they.
I think, I think it's. They do not, ninety-nine percent, they do more than, uh, one, two, not many. A lot of it, they do, they do it on staff a lot, but they don't mean, I don't know. Some of you, you can't staff. No, some of you got to go.
But also, they go on rotation, and precinct two, JP may have been going before we ended the policy on precinct four, so. I mean, you know, no offense, they choose to rotate them.
One's free then.
Oh. I don't know.
We got fourteen, four JP's at two thousand.
That's a very sixteen.
What's the?
I don't know. We got thirty, sixteen, and an eighteen.
How much are you talking again? I don't know. Did you say five or six?
Six down by.
Thirty-six.
Okay.
That's thirty.
Sixteen tonight.
Four-eight. That's sixty-eight thousand, yeah.
For, for council, you get four P's?
No, that's for. All four commissioners, judge, auditor, we get six, JPs, two. That totals up to sixty-eight.
And the council will pay you off?
Oh, four. Yeah, okay. Because they already, they got it up at the last.
Wait, what's your talk? How are we gonna do it again?
Councils, oh. Ashman, six, six. But what do you have for the auditor?
What was that on there?
You have four councils with sixteen, over sixteen, change. Four commissioners, twenty-four, that next four. Yeah, that's what I had. I just, I gotta. I'm trying to just come up with a total.
Oh, y'all still get off late now.
Councils.
We're doing that.
She stopped? Four thirteen.
That work?
Sixty-eight. Fifty-eight. That's within that, that the voting. Is this what she has?
I've got this key. I've got this.
Oh, that's fifty-eight. That's the, the insurance to the line is sixty.
Sixty-five, president.
Sixty-seven. There anything else? You got the same check, money, you always get. It all clear as mud? All you helped, none of which you. I just noticed that. They broke off after lunch, didn't they?
Uh, I heard, what's your score?
Going through everything, it was actually like that. You didn't know the top of that motion sheet I gave you when we started? What sort of things you thinking we really need to do to the website? Just unflutter it, or delete some of the really old stuff? I've never told it to take, I've told it to write yet. You said you brought something up, but, uh, I have never told it to take any of the older stuff, because I really don't know how long you're really supposed to keep copies of the budgets. You know, you put it up there so you're being transparent. When you take it off, you know it's a couple of years, it's a couple of years old, so.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, the, the closing part to me was more about what necessarily old budgets was all about. All the commission and court agendas.
Yeah. Oh, I guess, once they get up there, they're never taking down. They're just there.
Yes.
On the commission court view?
Yeah.
Well, they archive them after two years. You have to go to archive, archive at the top.
Yeah.
They can get twenties on there, but I have the twenties up there.
I haven't realized how you kept them, to be quite honest.
I don't think there's anything that says how.
I believe there's stuff on there, uh, going all the way back to two thousand and sixteen, when we took a look at it.
Well, I can put, I never had told it to take hardly anything down, but sometimes we need to look at it.
Well, you can really clean it up, and you could probably work with what you have, but why not start fresh in a new?
I know, it's kind of counterintuitive.
Because we were getting that for a little nothing. That's why. I was trying to save money when we started.
I mean, that's. The latest stuff ought to be at the top.
Yeah, that's right.
Comes up first, and that's not the way it is. It's a bunch of stuff buried.
Yeah, that front page, he just said, a lot of this was closed.
But it would be better if the newer stuff was on top.
Yeah.
That's right.
Anything else, commissioners, we need to get on to, or we about to get?
I just talked to Mark about that. Mark said that, that, uh, no, he's got to rub down. They bumped her up to the same thing that she was making before she left. That was thirty-seven, it was thirty-seven, three forty-three, and then American.
That was before the merit raise. We, when we went to their office and we talked about the budget, you get back the second secretary position, you give that money back, bump her up to what, uh, Mr. Laddie's secretary is making now.
It wasn't, it wasn't what.
No.
It was what's, what commissioners, current secretary now was making when she left.
He said it was like the office.
When we sat down with the judge in his office, we bumped it to thirty-nine, six, six, five, sixty.
We may have put that in the proposed, but I'm just wondering, I just filed proposed. I don't know if we, that didn't carry over. Let me see.
Because you said that since you get back that money, that you couldn't see why not give it to her.
I probably said that.
She's moving late, forty-three-five now. More than thirty minutes.
What's Charles' number again?
Forty-five.
Forty-five.
Page thirty-eight.
My question.
No, I'm just. Yeah, here's the. I'm sorry.
I, I put a, in my proposal, I put a. I put a bump in there in addition to, in my proposal, because I wasn't anticipating a raise like we're talking about right now. I, I didn't see it coming, but I did put, I think I did what I said I was gonna do, but that, that, like I say, that's the proposed budget. That was a two thousand dollar increase, and, and change.
If we get back the other secretary position, I think it was a thirty or twenty-eight thousand.
It was a thirty thousand.
I proposed thirty-nine thousand.
This was current, that was thirty thousand.
Now, we're at forty-three-five, so.
But that's with the merit raise. I'm talking about before the merit raise though.
Some people wanna call it a merit raise. I mean, I guess.
I mean, we ain't gave nothing yet. We're just talking.
Right. Well, anyway, my, my proposal was to raise it, and that, that.
The thirty-nine, sixty-five, eighty.
Yes, something like, yeah, that's right.
But see, I don't, I mean, I, I don't, that day I wasn't even here.
That's just what I put in the proposed budget that I filed a month ago in August.
That's the day y'all did cars too, Brett. Y'all went over there.
I don't know.
I remember. I wasn't here that day.
It wasn't, it might have been the day it is. I don't know.
Now, you put the thirty-nine in there, but you.
And what I put in there is thirty-nine. Now, commissioners are saying.
Yeah, what you put, what this red bus got in is thirty-nine.
That's what I put in it.
But this is changed. This one has changed.
The latest one says forty-three. Should put thirty-nine plus the raise.
Plus four thousand dollars. There's no way he sees if it's thirty-nine. If she's at thirty-nine right now, I'm just asking, and you put four thousand, or six thousand.
I proposed a raise because.
At four thousand.
Listen, I didn't put nothing, no. I didn't put a raise in for every position in the budget, because he handed back fifty thousand dollars. I put in a two thousand dollar raise. I said, "Ain't nobody gonna grab when a man's giving back fifty thousand dollars." But that was just my proposed budget. From the last year's budget, you add six to that, and you get forty-three thousand.
No, you don't.
Yeah, you do. Look in the one, the newest thing you got.
Okay, the newest one you got.
Knowing how reasonable minds y'all have, I put a little raise in there, because he gave, gave up.
I'm just asking.
Forty, fifty thousand dollars.
I'm just asking. They ask me, I ask them. There he is.
Just because I put it in there don't mean they go. But they're, they're at forty-three now. What was it? The red point, what are you suggesting it all be?
I don't, I don't. I'm just saying, when I looked at this book right here, when I looked at this book, I got this one this morning. Brett, I looked at this book right here, both of them, it says thirty-nine, six, six, five.
Yeah.
Okay, and if you, and if you put a four thousand dollar raise on it, or six thousand, or six thousand, I'm looking to go do, it's gonna change. That's all I'm saying.
The raise is, everybody, the proposed raise is based off going up from last year's.
I agree.
Thirty-nine is not what last year's was. It was thirty-seven. That's, that'd be the only line in the whole budget book that I put a raise on, because I thought surely.
I agree. I don't have a problem with that.
Nobody's gonna grab when a man's giving back forty thousand dollars.
Ain't wrong.
Because his argument was, the lady's doing what two used to be doing.
Magic planning, he getting the office, everybody.
Bottom line is, we're talking about going from thirty-seven to forty-three-five. That's six thousand. That's more than I can even put in there. How can you argue that?
When we, we talked about it, because everybody else, they wanted to, they were gonna be, or where they're at.
I actually believed, didn't believe we were gonna get these raises, but sheriff landed us a good contract, and we're able to, everybody's benefiting, like we all thought we were gonna do way back when we built it.
You know, that's, that's a, you know, that's a pretty good raise. That's twelve and a half raise.
It's like, every time we get somewhere, there's something else that's gotta be tweaked, and it just, at some point, we all be happy.
That's right. So, what we going to now, Swayne?
Is the sixty-four, forty proposed, or is it a done deal?
We don't know.
We haven't made, we haven't made the motions yet. I'm waiting on a motion.
So, are we on the JPs again, or what are we on?
We've done with it.
Okay. Okay.
Man? Well, here's the numbers.
I can't hear you. Okay, so now, yeah.
Mark's trying to, uh...
Waiting on some numbers?
Where we are right now is four hundred and eighteen thousand roughly, that's my best guess, estimate for us keeping up with our changes.
Okay.
So, uh, we have...
That's included the three for the acquisition.
Yes.
Yeah.
We're taking that out of fund balance. This is how much, remember we're putting in three hundred thousand, and we're gonna put in three hundred dollars.
Ain't none of this come out of the cover?
I had some of this reported.
I've got two, I don't have it, you can't have it, there is...
I'm just saying.
Two hundred and thirty-five thousand for our, my lucky contingency that should cover that.
Contingency needs to go away and go towards that, because that, the only reason it's there, it was excess at one time, but now it's...
What about the capital credit for following? Forty-one thousand.
Extra one.
And then we had it, then we had the, uh, a raise district, almost thirty thousand. Okay, I just wrote my stuff down. Then the hotel fund balance, we're...
Throw them back in there and then come around back out.
Okay, what raise? How much raise? Sure. I'm just making sure, because I keep him that four, then six two. He says four, he said, okay, okay.
How much?
Sixty-two, forty, is that what it is?
Six. Six.
All right.
Four.
No. Forty?
Oh, yes.
The sixty-two, forty?
That's what it is.
That's what I'm saying, every time I hear it's, it's forwards.
That's what the original, I don't know. It goes, it's going back into...
No, I don't speak here.
Huh?
I will make sure we're all clear on that.
That'll be in a minute, yes.
I will make sure it's clear.
Three hours and a half, eight hours.
I will, I will make sure it's clear. American raise. American raise.
Okay, go on now.
Talk, we can hear y'all. Yeah, y'all talk, we can hear y'all. Ain't that what y'all tell us?
Yeah.
Hey, Joe, Mr. Dieter, don't we gotta hear what they're talking about? Any other time you get on us, I'll tell you.
Well, you're still not there yet.
I may not try.
I, I know, it's much better than here, but...
So next time, does it take that to thank and walk the move?
Yes, sir. That's exactly right, I got that written down here. Let me tell you what's in Sheriff's Department. Sheriff's Department, anybody that works over eighty, eighty hours, they work eighty-four, is sixty-five, fifty-two. Everybody else is sixty-two, forty.
All right.
Just, just so you know, they, they are getting more, they're supposed to work more, so they get in.
They deserve it.
I'm not just speaking that, we're trying to get everybody raised. So, back here on item four, consideration discussion, possible vote to adopt this as a year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget. Where we need to be, we have a, uh, that has to go first, and then once that's approved, then we, then we have a motion to set the tax rate to accommodate that budget. We got, this one we prepared, you gave us numbers, right?
Yes, I gave that to you.
Good. I don't care, I mean, I, I'm on it, man. I feel like... They won't catch from JP's, I was thinking. Huh? There you go.
So now, is that a done deal?
No, sir, Mr. Dieter, we hadn't, we hadn't voted, we haven't had a motion or, no, it's not. All we've done is discussed, discussed, and discussed. We think we're, I think we're real close. He's got to formulate his thoughts, and it's got, it's gonna be a long-winded motion, he wanted to make sure we make a proper record of it, because we... Gotta be able to document what we've done here.
Do you think it's been pretty good, Mr. Dieter?
It's better.
What I have down here is, uh, commissioners, six thousand each one. Constables, four thousand for each one. County judges, same as commissioners. Auditor, four thousand. JP, two thousand. That totals fifty-eight, and that, that's, that's Commissioner, pulling it out, Commissioner McNally, that... That's kind of like taking the rebate we got from the tax, we wasn't expecting and applying it to that. It physically goes back to the donor fund, then it comes back out. That's how it's, that's what justifies it. So... And I'm, I have a problem, Mike. There's four more listings that we might give in the... Just kind of got a little problem there. You wanna give them something? It's not me, I just said I kind of got a problem. Not tell the court.
And we got four?
What do we got? Cannon, Disney, Ford, Treasury, Tax Assessor, right, they're going forward.
Give them a couple thousand?
Yeah, I, you get it?
Let's see.
In that way, uh, is, is that what I understand, nobody's gonna charge the bill for your taxes, is that what we're doing?
If we do this, we can't charge a mileage.
Right, I'm gonna agree.
Is that fair enough?
Yes.
I'm sorry, what are y'all giving?
Two thousand.
Huh?
And no more mileage charging.
And, and, and to be historically correct, way back under, they had a, a, a provision where, for a long time, the big fours made a thousand dollars or so more than the commissioners did. It was like that for twenty years. And that was why, because of kind of a thing like this, and they, the commissioners back then made a little adjustment to compensate for that. And that kind of went away, somehow it went away, I, I think it was, I don't know when it went away, but it went away, and this is kind of...
So to make it clear, you don't, nobody did hit vehicle allowance or gets reimbursement on the travel.
Vehicle allowance is for traveling camp, travel is when you go outside the camp.
That's what I, that's what I...
You take the car and drive to Austin. Anybody that does that can turn in and get... I'm just saying, I'm not sure, I'm not trying to...
I just don't, I just, okay, if we do this...
I was just trying to ask for the...
Mike, if we do this, no more mileage.
For any other conditions?
I don't charge it, so I never have, so I don't, I, I don't know, I never charge it. I always buy my own lunch, and I don't do that.
I have charged it before, and I also go out...
So we stop it now?
Turn in, oh, wait a minute. I go out and turn it, I get reimbursed, the taxes are mine, and I get the money back, I bring money back in to cover my expenses. Most of the time, not every time.
So if we do this, we're all stopping now?
I think it's, those are apples and oranges, is what I'm saying.
Well, we're gonna figure out if it's apples or oranges.
Yeah, we're gonna, the votes, hey, look.
We're gonna figure that out right now.
I think what Madam Treasurer is saying is, she goes back and forth to the bank here and there, and she does a little bit of traveling.
I say, if, if, unless it's emergency, nobody charges mileage no more.
Not here. I don't have a problem with that.
If you're getting, if you're getting paid a vehicle allowance.
I don't have a problem with that.
That's just me, one vote, I'm, you know...
Okay.
I would like much to approve the, adopt a budget that you're working on. Hey, let me get this straight, we got this sheet in front of us. We got three dollar an hour rates for all full-time employees.
Ah, American.
Except for the ones in the jail that already received the raise, that's it. Donna keeps saying American raise.
There you go.
Remember one call today. Inmate house revenue needs to go up to three hundred and fifty today. New revenue account, district court fees, uh, twelve oh one, zero, we're gonna move to ten, no. Move it to twenty-four, right? Twenty-four. New revenue for district court junior fee five, we move to five hundred. Adjusted impound, SO, uh, NSO impound for current budget, it's twelve eight. Adjusted animal shelter, we're, we're not gonna carry over by a three for one dollars. Put a barman officer back, can stand alone, it's not in Sheriff's Public anymore. District attorney has for five thousand, longevity pay for Rod Fritter, it's gonna be reimbursed, so it's a net zero impact. We're gonna use the contingency and the COVID virus money to fund the rest of this budget. Increased sanitation, twenty-one seven for ARPA, which is actually just a carryover from this year to the next year. And the revenue for hotel tax, we're gonna put seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars in revenue line item. And it's gonna be dispersed into the expense items. Two thirty-nine will be sixty-six, fifty, four thirty-two, sixteen thousand, four thirty-three is sixteen thousand, four thirty-four is twenty-four thousand, and five ten is seventeen thousand. Also on the revenue line, we're going to add three hundred thousand from a general fund. And that expenditure is gonna go into four nine, same three hundred thousand for land purchase. We're also going to give part-time employees a dollar fifty per hour raise. Animal control, we got line twelve fifty, that was ten thousand for animal care, we'll cut that in half and we'll leave five. We're gonna put five in the new line item for euthanization. Is that what we said?
That was ten.
Ten.
Oh, it's ten, it was twenty in there?
Yes.
Run it back up. That's what my numbers say, but I just cut it half. We're gonna leave, if it was twenty in there, we're gonna leave ten, and we'll put ten over in a different line item for euthanization. Glad y'all were watching. District court, we're gonna move zero two two one to eighty thousand. We'll move zero two two five to fifteen thousand. On four thirteen, uh, line, uh, line item four thirteen, what is four thirteen, I write that down.
County court.
County court, as a cut, we're gonna move line item zero two 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 to five thousand dollars, which is a cut. Building maintenance, we're gonna move building, building mechanic two, three, and four. Their weight should be forty-three, three seventy-eight forty, they all should be the same. Four forty-five, which is dispatch, I mean DPS, we're gonna add fifty-five, fifty-five thousand dollars capitalizing on the length of two eight hours.
Forty-eight fifty.
Five thousand dollars, eight percent. Perfect. Zero four eighty-six, line item zero 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 eight, which is part-time dipper, we're gonna move that to thirty thousand dollars. Engine of healthcare, zero four five eight. We're gonna move that to two hundred, which is a decrease of seven thousand dollars. And there's zero zero one six, which is the National Forest Fund. All four precincts are gonna carry forward this year's, the other year's, whatever we collect, for next year's expenditures.
You're talking about Title III now?
Title III, forest, National Forest Service. Precinct two, zero zero four, thirty-one thousand plus fifty-five, or one full thousand dollars. Precinct four, I've got a sheet here, you want, you want the sheet? I said earlier, I'm gonna move my fund balance, I'm gonna increase my fund balance to four hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine forty-four thirty-two, which is going to increase my contracted services to seventy-five thousand, increase my gas and oil to seven thousand. We're gonna put a hundred fifty in a line item for a match for Hurricane Harvey mitigation grant. I'll put sixty thousand in capitalizing for, for passenger. And I'll put sixty thousand in capitalizing for, for a passenger. Anyway, I'm gonna move back to precinct two, you're gonna move, what is it, four hundred and thirty-four thousand?
Four hundred and thirty thousand.
I got four thousand, that's worth four thousand.
Four hundred and forty.
Four hundred and forty-four and thirty-four thousand. And you're gonna put one oh five in the capitalizing.
Yes.
And the rest goes into maintenance, true?
Yes.
Precinct two?
Yes.
And what, what was that called?
There's reimbursement.
There's reimbursement, because y'all already have the funds. So it's carried forward, basically. And then on the vehicle allowance. You're gonna move the constable, awful constable, you're gonna grant them four thousand dollars more. Commissioners, and the county judges, are gonna get six thousand dollars more. The auditors are gonna get four thousand dollars more. JPs are gonna get two thousand apiece. Tax office, district court, county clerk, and the treasurer's gonna get two thousand dollars more. So, to balance the budget, we're gonna take the money out of the general fund, any additional money, you can add to it one thousand. Yes, no? We're, we're using the Corona already, right?
Yeah, yeah.
We're gonna use it, we're gonna use the contingency in its entirety.
Yeah, in my proposed budget, I had two twenty-seven contingency.
If we made it, or if we have somebody.
That's right.
Shouldn't be much, I mean, I think about a hundred thousand dollars. Unless you want some revenues.
No, it's not. That's right. Well saved.
Yeah, it was quite a bit. Now, surely we forgot something.
I have, I have a motion by Commissioner Mattoon. Thank you, Commissioner, I have a second by Commissioner McNally. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You know, it's five seethrough. Now, item number five, consideration discussion and possible vote to set a tax rate for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, that's twenty, that should be twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. And I have prepared a motion, the number should be. The nu, the number's in, written in the box? No? The number. You didn't put the number in there? Oh, let me find that. How many blanks is there?
Two. Tax rate and a percentage of increase.
Oh, zero point five two nine five seven is the tax rate. That is equal to the lower approval rate, but not over.
Yeah, it's effectively a double percent increase. See, that's word wrong, but I disagree. Says I move the property tax rate by increase, adoption of a, zero five two nine five seven, which is a bigger rate.
That's somewhat misleading, but, but that's the way they have.
Tax rate should be increase in tax collection.
This is a cheat sheet.
Three point five percent or something. It says six point two.
Six point two, I believe.
That's what it says in the red book.
Yeah.
Six point two, that's what it is.
That's based on the amount of tax rate, and whatever other changes we had are based on other sources of revenue that can be evaluated and, and planned to use.
You just got one page that you're gonna, uh, lunch with.
And the cop is gonna go back and try to get that seven hundred thousand dollars, right? You don't try?
I don't know.
Well, we gotta go to.
Six point two, it says.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what the calculation was. Zero point five two nine five seven and six point two.
I'm not sure all of that comes from, but I think some of it's from that state mandate.
I found the mandates.
Yeah.
She's gonna do a lot of those.
So I'm having a hard time saying this, because it says I move the property tax rates to be increased by, we're gonna increase them.
That's, the statute says what, how you have the motions supposed to be ordered in order to fly. I printed that right off the book. Hey, this, this is a great day.
Maybe you won't type it.
It's, it's an increase because you're above the ground revenue rate.
It's not an increase from last year. It wasn't last year. No, it's a three point.
It was last year.
If I had to say it, I'd have chosen two. Huh? If I had to say it, I'd have chosen two.
You'll say it, and you won't say it, it's gone.
He's looking, he's checking the percentage.
You get blasted anyways.
I was looking for the card where it says, or the motion. The motion's the same way every year, and I just reprinted the old commodity here, because I have printed it up right out of the book.
Last year, it was zero point five seven seven nine six.
That's right. We come down, we come down five points.
Five points you dropped.
Yes, sir. You have it?
There you go.
Oh, I got this, yeah. I got, I got. That's what was put in the purpose, though. Six point two was the percentage, and the motion is like I say, that's the same motion we had last time. I print this out every time, I just take it right out.
Who, who made the motion last time?
We made the motion.
You got your last two questions, too?
Right here.
Yeah, I was about to cross it.
The motion was made by Mark Mattoon, who is the second by Commissioner Matt.
No, 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 go get you.
Last year. I don't know where you were at, or something, your signature wasn't on here.
Well, I moved that the property tax rate be increased by a dominant of a rate of zero point five two nine five seven, which is effectively a six point two percent increase in the tax rate, which I just figured this is a contribution to taxes.
And I qualify that by saying, we lowered the rate from five seven seven nine down to five two nine five seven. But the way you disclose it through the truth and taxation rules, because of the value, well, we are generating, we're not trying to say we're not collecting more taxes, but we're char, we are lowering the rate, even though this motion says that the tax rate be increased. Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Mattoon, second by Commissioner McNally, to adopt the rate on five two nine zero on five two nine five seven. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? I was having it, you know, it's five of them. Thank you so much. Got an order right here.